Dang it, hang on a second. Yep. Okay, we're back.
Okay, we're back from a safety session, no action taken. Next up is finance.
Good morning Commissioners.
Good morning.
I'm Robinson, Finance Director. I have a couple of financial reports to go through with you. This is for the month of April. So this composition of cash balances and investments comes from the CIC program on the cash side of it. So you can see our total cash at the end of April was thirty-nine million, six nineteen, seven ninety-three, thirty-seven cents. So we balance with the Treasurers duplicate statement. Again, you can see on the bottom, the thirty-nine, six one nine, seven ninety-three, thirty-seven. And then this last report is on the financial side. So again, if you go to the last page, what you want to see is that same thirty-nine, six one nine, seven ninety-three, thirty-seven. So that's just for your information to show that the cash balances for the month of April. Any questions on that? The next one is your month reports, your monthly reports on expenditures and revenues. So this is the expenditure. We're at thirty-three point three-three percent into the year at the end of April. The ones in blue are the ones that have exceeded that thirty-three point three-three percent. So you can see the general fund is a little bit over, we've talked about that. Our transfers go out at the beginning of the year, we have insurance, Workman's Comp. And we also disposed another one million, two hundred and fifty thousand. A million going to CIP and two hundred and fifty thousand into the facility fund to help replenish for some of those maintenance costs that we were seeing over from the jail. The library has exceeded, and that's based on the timing of the distributions, as is the economic development. And then this next page, you can see the fire district is just over that. It's not a worrisome number, it's really pretty much in line, just, you can see just a little bit over. So any questions on the expenditure side?
Nope.
No.
Okay, so this is your general fund by department. This tells you the individual departments that are over that thirty-three point three-three percent mark. We have the District Court. Keep in mind with the District Court, they have a lot of reimbursement money that comes back in from other counties. And so that thirty-seven to one is not a worrisome number as well. The General Service Appropriation and Transfers, again, that's high because of the timing of the the debt, the funding that goes out, both with the appropriations and then the transfers, as we talked, with the additional money. GIS Planning, theirs is largely due to their pictometry that they pay out at the beginning of the year, and as we move through, you'll see that regulate. And the Appraiser's just a little bit high, again, not a worrisome number. I would expect that that is largely due to the mellings that they sent out, and so that's a relatively large number within their budget. Are there any questions on any of the expenditures in the general fund?
When we had to redo the tax statements, where does that money come from? The monies that we've had to, because I want to know how much that is, how much that cost us?
We actually are paying for that through the General Service. The Clerk's Office didn't have it in their budget, and they asked me about it, and I said that the General Services could absorb those postage costs. They did pay for the training out of their tech fund, but the postage we did go through the General Service budget.
Are you asking what the cost, what the cost was, though?
To?
To, what, what was the actual?
Teresa, did you know what that was?
I don't know, they had, I just was curious where it came out of.
I know we put five thousand on the machine.
Yeah, the biggest cost was the postage. We had to get five hundred dollars worth of envelopes, but she paid for that out of the clerk's budget. And then we didn't pay any overtime because we flexed that.
But then we're also gonna have to eat the, any, any property that got sold, we have to eat that.
Yeah, I don't know.
Yeah. Okay. Well, I'm sure we won't know until after everything, you know. I still have not gotten a bill, and neither has Willie.
Do you have a mortgage company?
I have one, he doesn't. And I, I, neither one of us have gotten it.
Okay.
So. I mean, that's concerning, you know what I mean? That people are gonna get late fees now if they don't get that bill, because I mean, I know it's been all over Facebook and, and you know, but that doesn't mean people know about, you know.
Well, it doesn't guarantee that.
Yeah, exactly. No, I think it's a mail thing for sure.
Okay, so this is the revenue budget activity, and this is for your information to see where we are compared to what we budgeted. Are there any questions on any of those?
Yep.
Okay. I have one more little fun report that I wanted to share with you, this is not for any decisions, nothing like that. You don't have to study it to answer any questions. This is just, we went to our budget seminar last week, and they had a graph that I thought was like graph that I thought was kind of interesting, and so I was thinking to myself while we were there, I was gonna come home and put it on paper, just to as we're moving into budget season, I thought it would be some interesting information for you. So the top row, twenty-two through twenty, twenty-five, is based on if we kept the mill constant from the twenty-two budget, and the reason I chose twenty-two budget is because we redid our budget, we restructured it in twenty-three. So I just wanted to be able to show you from twenty-two through twenty-five how it would have played out had we kept the mill rate flat. And the mill rate being kept flat is a discussion that a lot of people will say, well, we kept our mill rate flat. So then people wrongly assume that there's no increase to tax. And this depicts that in a perfect way for it to illustrate how that plays out. So the top row shows you if our mill rate was seventy point four one six, which is what it was in twenty twenty-two, and if we kept that constant through twenty twenty-five. The valuation is what the true valuation was with the November numbers, as is the value of one mill. So that tax levy line that's not in green would be what we would have levied had we kept our mill rate flat. So for instance, in twenty twenty-three, if we'd have kept that seventy point four one six mill rate, we would have been levying nineteen million, two fifty-five, two eighty-eight. But what we actually levied in twenty-three was sixteen million, four thirty-six, eight thirty-four. So when you compare to twenty-two to twenty-three, which is what we did when we were looking at this, and we said we saved one point one million from the previous year, which is a completely true statement. But if you look at had we kept the mill rate flat, not only did we save the money from the twenty-two, but we also saved that difference in our levy from nineteen point two million to the sixteen point four million. So about three million dollars was saved by not keeping our mill rate flat. Likewise, in twenty-four, four million was saved by not keeping our mill levy flat. And in twenty twenty-five, five million was saved by not keeping our mill levy flat. So that paints a pretty clear picture, what happens when you keep the mill rate flat and your valuation increases.
Yeah, that is very eye-opening, because I, I know I've talked, you know, I have that chart that, you know, shows the school district and the city have kept their mill levy flat. If we'd have done that, our taxes would be five million dollars more than what they are now, so.
And then the other thing, your tax levy dollars, so you know, really, when you're talking about where you're levying, that's what the R and R is for, is that your levies remain flat. So if we do that in this illustration, twenty-two to twenty-five, and we kept our tax levies flat from seventeen point five million across the board, again, your valuation is your actual, and the value of one mill is the actual based on the November rates, then the mill rates, you can see, we would have went still from seventy point four one six to sixty-four point one six eight, fifty-nine point eight five two, and fifty-seven point eight three oh, had we kept our dollars flat. That's what would have been the effect on the levy. So when you compare to what we did with our actual mill rates, again, you can see in twenty-three, we could have levied up to that sixty-four point one six eight and kept our dollars flat, but we went to sixty point one oh nine. Twenty-four, we could have levied the fifty-nine point eight, we went to fifty-six point seven. And in twenty-five, we could have done fifty-seven point eight, and we were fifty-four point eight. So in twenty twenty-five, we were three mills lower than what we had the authority do, to do based on the R and R. So again, good illustration to see that I know people are, never think that the taxes are as low as they should be, but this is a good illustration that we, the entire county, not just Finance, but the Department Heads, the Commissioners, all of us, and working together, are trying hard to pull those tax dollars down so people aren't paying as much.
I know other Commissioners, when I tell them we've lowered our mill levy fifteen mills, and that we are truly paying less ad valorem taxes than we were in two thousand seventeen, don't believe me, I have to pull out the chart to show them.
Well, and, and I did put a statement on the bottom, because this is really important, because people have a tendency to say, but my taxes went up. And that may be true individually, we don't have complete control over that because of what the market does and the appraisal it comes out as. But as a collective whole, which means an average of everyone's taxes, this is what you see happening. So individually, we would have to look at it separately for people, but as a whole, this is what we've been able to do.
Is that something that is too confusing? I mean, shouldn't be. But is that something to put in the brochure?
I think it might be confusing, and then they'll be like, well, it is, you know what I mean? I think, unless somebody's explaining it, because when I first looked at it, I was like, oh, I didn't understand it.
And that's the thing. I think it's a great one, and I can look at it, but not everyone has a background knowledge in accounting, but it makes sense.
And you're explaining it to us, but yeah, I guess it's a better person.
It would be very confusing, yeah, it would be.
And I do have a talk that I'm giving at the end of the month, and I am going to take this and go through the chart with them, because I think it's good information for people to see, and for them to pass on to other people, for sure. But I would, I kind of hate to put it out there and then have people confused on what they're looking at. So I'm more than happy to share it with anybody who wants to come in and look at it and go through the information, but I, I don't want to create confusion or chaos by not explaining.
But it is good to know.
Yeah, it's just one more tool for education.
Yep.
And to justify Finance Department.
Yeah. So Courtney and I went to the Budget Workshop last week, and we asked them some good questions, and a couple of things they couldn't answer, and they got to get back to us on. But, you know, I walked away from it, and I felt like we had some good discussions. There's a gentleman that works for an accounting firm, and he actually presents all the K-MAG topics, and his name is Scott Lloyd, and, and he's a great individual. I've worked with him when I was in private accounting doing taxes and audits. And he was there, and so I had a good conversation with him as well, and so, you know, it's good to see that someone who's as seasoned as he is still comes to those things and feels like it's important to be there and interact and, and have those conversations, so. It was good. Jamelle was there as well from the city, and so we had a conversation with him, and
Good.
So, it was good. Good, that's all I have this morning.
All right, thank you, I appreciate that information.
I hope not.
Yeah. Good morning.
I'm Rhonda with Community Corrections, Villain Number Chris Anne, she's out of state this week. But we are here to ask permission or request approval to trade in two of our vehicles. I believe in the package she gave you all the information. She got three referrals or requests, it was the Jim Clark for a Chevy Trailblazer. Home Automotive and Abilene for a Malibu, and Ballard was supported state. We would like to go find and get the Trailblazer from, trade in our Fusion to Jim Clark for the Chevy Trailblazer. And we'll be trading in a Malibu, a twenty eighteen Chevy Malibu, for another Chevy Malibu. I don't know what else she put in your package, so.
Yeah. Do you want to do it separate, since I can't vote on the Jim Clark one?
Oh, okay.
So Kathy, you're gonna have to make that motion.
Are you, you're buying the two vehicles or the?
Yes, we're trading two vehicles. And we do wait towards the end of our fiscal year, this three months, just because that's how knowing that we still have money left for the last three months, our fiscal year starts July one through the state. And so Chris Anne usually will wait towards the end of our fiscal year to make any kind of purchases, just to make sure that we still have plenty. And looking at our average monthly expenses for the last three months, we still have money in each of the budgets, on the juvenile side and on the adult side.
And they put a lot of miles on those cars because they go to Marion and.
We have a car in all four counties, just because the juvenile intake is a twenty-four seven operation. And then when we travel to the different counties for, to meet with clients, go to court, trainings, anything like that, we take our county vehicles, so we don't have to pay out mileage to anybody.
So you're wanting to, to go with the, the Trailblazer from Jim Clark and the Malibu from Home, is that right?
Yes, ma'am.
So what we need to do is, let, let's start this one. I entertain a motion for Home Automotive to start.
So moved on that one.
I'll second.
Okay. And then seven to three, for recommendation for, for Malibu from Home. Home Automotive, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Now Trish abstaining from this, I need a motion.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to go forward with the purchase for the twenty twenty-five Chevy Trailblazer from Jim Clark.
And I will second that. In favor?
Aye.
Motion carried with one extension.
Thank you. And hey, I just, I know you're not here as this, your official role as a City Commissioner, but I think you do a great job of getting, you are at every event, and you, you do a great job.
Don't make it to everything, but I try our best to get there.
Yeah. It is hard to make it to everything, I know. Yeah. Yeah, well, I appreciate your work on that. Yep, me too.
Hello.
Morning.
Good morning.
Jeremy, did you understand, or it was that somewhere where, oh, maybe it wasn't, I read that about asking you to do give information about some of the rural about the rural roads.
I didn't even hear you talk, I'm so sorry.
Did you get that about that?
Yes.
Yeah, that, I just, you know, whenever, you know, don't worry about anything real extensive, I just thought that might be something that, you know, could be.
No, I think we kind of discussed it as well, and I may not, just once a month, I'll give a good update on that side of things. Because I know we really do get a lot more of the facilities and that sort of thing, the public courts kind of gets a little bit shattered a little bit, but. That, and then also, Trish had mentioned before, and we've done a little bit of it, but quarterly, we'll start firing up the important pictures and stuff, to do a little presentation of all the.
Okay, good, yeah, yeah. I don't know, like it said, about the stuff that you put on roads and anything, you know, and I'm not on rural roads necessarily a lot.
Yeah.
But I know, it seems like, like I send you a question, it seems like whenever I'm out, I get a question about it. But I just think that.
We know moving forward, there's a lot, a lot of goals and things that we need to identify as far as major improvements to where we're going. And just having that in the past from that standpoint. Something we'll have to get in place.
Your tax statement went to your mortgage company, Core Laundery.
Okay.
And Willie still has a mortgage listed on the statement, but you said he's not supposed to have one?
Uh-uh.
Have to get a hold of the Treasurers office about that.
So should he just call and say, hey, I know I probably owe something? Okay, I'll tell him.
That would be best.
Okay. So anyway, I, I did not hear her talk, and she talks so low. But, so, and it, it's something that I just want to sit down and explain it to you, because it's kind of confusing, I was gonna try to write it out, but I figured just sitting and talking to you guys, but basically, it's a, a thing to do a, like a feature of our county, and, and so I'm gonna need some help on that, so. But yeah, do you guys, any time on Thursday afternoon, or?
I do, yeah, I didn't get the five back to the chef, but my county.
So like two o'clock, does that work on Thursday? Okay. Yeah, right? Somebody more important than me. Yeah.
Good morning Commissioners, Jeremy Myers, Public Works Administrator.
Courthouse Administrative Services Manager.
First thing on the list today would be an action item, requesting petition from Caroline and Sons for boring underneath Corey Road for water line. We should have received that, it is a standard board. Looked at the location, will pose any maintenance concerns for us, the majority of that water line is buried on private property, so. Request petition approval for Caroline and Sons to install that.
So moved.
Move.
I'll second.
Then sign in, Home Automotive, say aye.
Aye.
Next on the list is the TCA Preventive Maintenance Contracts. They do expire end of this month, this would be for June first, twenty twenty-five through May thirty-first of twenty twenty-six. We could send those to you as well, if you have a chance to review those. There was some changes. The courthouse did remain the same cost, and The courthouse did remain the same cost and Public Works, which is encompassed with all the other buildings, did remain the same as well. Cloud Community College did see an increase of $1,068. I spoke with Adam, TCA, and the other individual, I just can't remember his name at this point, I'm sorry. The increase to Cloud County Community College was because Building D, according to them, they had never really accounted for. Kind of a mistake on their part. So they have lost money on that contract over the past few years because they didn't quite have their things figured right. But that would be the increase there for that building. The sheriff's office, there are some additional items to that that are not currently on the PM contract. One of those would be that 303 Monroe Street. And you can see that was an additional $920. 218 Ninth Street, $545, that's the warehouse over there for the sheriffs. And then that Norfolk Lake Substation, $690 for putting that on the PM contract. Those are not currently on the PM contract. Adam thought it would be a good idea to put them on. I know the Monroe one here, last year, we just put a new HVAC system in that, and you all approved. Some sort of preventative maintenance on those systems would be a benefit to Gary County.
Oh, I agree.
So with that, you do see that cost increase of $2,666 for that one. Looking through these, I don't see anything out of order. I think it is very important that we stick with preventative maintenance contracts on this HVAC system. TCA have done a very good thorough job of keeping those systems going for Gary County.
I'll make a motion to approve the contracts presented.
Second.
And then sign it to the TCA Public, or no, what is it called? Preventive Maintenance. Preventive Maintenance, thankfully, contract for June 1st of this year through May 31st of 26. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next item would be Sheriff's HVAC unit replacement. One of the two HVAC units that support the administrative office area of the SO needs to be replaced. This unit is original to the remodel and due to the age, replacement is warranted rather than keep throwing expensive repairs at it. It is currently down there, running off of one unit. Luckily enough, the weather's been somewhat tolerable to keep it in the seventies, it hadn't reached the eighties in there yet. But cost on that is $9,833. I did speak with Kami regarding facility funds for that, she agreed that would be the best place to pull funding. Ask them if they can get on that. They can get on it right away.
Good. So moved.
All second.
And move, sign in, approve the HVAC, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Did I misspeak that number? That was $9,883.
I thought that's what you said.
I thought it was too. Next is RAN pest control proposal for the office building here. I did get a call from HR that they thought they had served termites in the window in the HR office. So we did have RAN come out and they did, they confirmed that there was some termites in that area. We got a proposal to spot treat and install bait stations around the entire building. We do have some other facilities that we do that with the courthouse and those sort of things. This one had just never gotten to that point. RAN's cost for the bait station and the spot treat was $2,640. And there would be a $385 yearly maintenance fee once installed. That is pretty much in line with the other buildings. So I'd ask commission, commission to approve RAN's proposal and that would be facilities one as well.
I'll make that motion to accept that proposal for RAN pest control.
Second.
And move, sign in, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And when we redo those pest control contracts, we'll get that added on as, as part of the contract. Next, we got Skitty Road culvert replacement. There are two corrugated metal pipe culverts needing to be replaced due to their condition and age. They are rusted and allowing the road to settle in places, Teresa, where one of them. Try to smooth up the ride for her a little bit. Oh, who wouldn't ride over here? So one of those is located at Skitty Road and East Line Street intersection. And the other one is just north of Hoff Ridge on Skitty Road. I'm proposing to replace those with reinforced concrete pipe and in sections as longevity will exceed the corrugated metal pipes that are currently in place. Cost for those is $7,035 from Old Castle to Peaking, Kansas. And I did get another proposal from the Pearson Concrete and that was $9,254.12. So Old Castle is the cheapest. These are two separate projects, however, I'd like to combine this purchase due to shipping costs. I can get one load for $600. If I order at two separate occasions, then I've got two $600 deliveries on that, so I'd just like to combine. So with that, I'd ask commission weigh the purchasing policy and approve for me to purchase these culverts through Old Castle in Peaking, Kansas.
So moved.
All second.
And those will come out of Rhode and Bridge Culvert Line for that purchase. And then sign in, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next is Mudson Road, Rucker Road and K-18 Highway Intersection. KDOT and Commissioner Giordano have reached out to me on separate occasions regarding my knowledge of safety concerns with this intersection. It has been said that there has been several near misses with the high school traffic. And the sheriff's office reported that between years of 2023 and 2025, they have responded to six accidents at this intersection. I guess just wanted to fill commission out, I can fill out an application for a TEEP study or a Traffic Engineering Assistance Program application through KDOT to look at this intersection.
Any estimates, would you say?
What is that?
What was the timeframe of the accidents?
Between 2023 and 2025, there were six accidents at this intersection. There was one real reason.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. What, what's the TE, what does it stand for? Traffic what?
Yes, it's Traffic Engineering Assistance Program. Cory had done some of these in the past, if you recall, when there was a speed limit lowered on Old Forty. That was part of the TEEP study, there was some out, I believe, on Norfolk Lake Road.
I, I've received several, well, the one who just reached out, it was one of the school board members reached out, but I've had several parents worried about that intersection as well. And I, I think it, it definitely, you know, with the, the increased traffic with the high school out there, I definitely think that it is something we need to do.
Yeah, I would agree with you and I think it's a good idea to get KDOT involved in this since they have a lot of ride away up that intersection.
Yeah.
Just not sure how much more Gary County could do on our side.
Yes.
To improve that intersection, but you know, looking at this through KDOT, they may be able to identify some things as well.
Could, I mean, actually, those kind of stats for our straight seats, Safe Streets For All would assist in that too, right? Okay. Okay, good. Well, I'm gonna, yeah, I, do we need a motion for that to, to implement that?
Um, I don't believe so.
Okay.
Just as far as, you know, if that's the direction commission would like to go, I'll get on the website, fill out an application and see what they say.
What do you got, what do you think, Kathy?
I think it's a great idea. I, I too think with the traffic, with the kids and stuff, trial on those, and I think it's, I have always thought it was.
We need it to be a safe area setting. Is that, can you bring that up at your next staff meeting? Yep.
Thank you.
Next would be emergency management exterior painting bids. After review, after reviewing the bids received, we do find Riley Construction to be the lowest and best bid received. This project was approved through CIP for a total amount of $15,000. And because Riley Construction bid is $16,342, we would need to have an approval of the CIP amendment in the amount of $1,342 to have enough funds for this project. So I would recommend commission approval of the amendment and award the project to Riley Construction. That amendment will be brought to you by Kami next week. We have filled it out and turned it into her, but there would need to be that additional $1,342 added to that CIP for that.
So moved.
All second.
And move, sign in to, among the CIP. All in favor, say aye.
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 I guess with that, is there still thought in the future of doing some kind of mural on this west wall? Drifted away and I don't know, you know, what, what anybody's thoughts are on that.
I, I think it would be good and there, you know, there's actually grants out there for those, for murals, so I, I'd like to look into it.
We'll keep our eye open when they have some grant opportunities to go and pour it to.
Okay.
Surely. Well, maybe this is me, but the issue would be what we want on the. It would have to definitely be a collaborative effort between everybody to figure out what we want to be there. All right, next, panel concrete replacement bid update. I am still working to get costs on the items that the contractor had in his bid that he would like to sign into supply. These items included the ADA grading and the aluminum handrail to replace the rest of metal handrail currently in place. I was able to get a cost on the grading and that was $792.38, but I'm still waiting to meet with the contractor on the aluminum handrail portion of that. I did speak with that contractor, which was the only one that turned in a bid and his start date, end date is flexible. So I know, I think he had a start date of last Monday, but we can work with it, so. Soon as I get that, I'll be back to request an approval of that one. GIS zoning camera and electric door entry update. Commission had asked that I look into that. We did receive a quote for a camera and electronic door entry for GIS in the sanitarium office. Full cost for equipment and installation was $7,894.08. And that did come with a monthly service fee of $185 and that would be for a 60-month term. I guess with that, I think I can get some more quotes, might be a little bit more competitive, but I think getting that dollar amount way down is not going to happen.
No.
Is this what they have?
Or?
Next step was the one that got this worked for us. I guess based off of that information, if commission would like to still pursue, I can reach out for some more quotes or store your thoughts. How much the west, you talking though, I mean, is it worth the time? I mean, if I was to throw a guess out there, maybe trim it down by 2,000, my guess is it's going to stay about that 5,000 or more.
How many quotes did you have?
I just received the one to kind of get an idea of the cost before we really jump deep into the weeds. I would, I would say that I didn't look for some more.
Okay.
That, that's not a problem.
No, you might as well, I mean, it never hurts to check.
Yeah. We want to be competitive.
Mm-hmm.
I just tend not to like to waste a lot of people's time just wrapping together proposals if it's something that we feel I don't want to persecute. We're not too hard. No, we'll, we'll reach out to some more certainly. Next, Kansas Falls inspection. We did meet with FEMA for mitigation on the Kansas Falls road site that is currently closed due to that June flooding event last year. They're going to be working some numbers back through mitigation to see what's the best direction to go. While we are, we're on site, we did discuss possibilities of a low water crossing there. And I did reach out to Chad with Paul Valley and he did say there are fewer and fewer low water crossings in Kansas because of the environmental folks don't like, that they tend to block aquatic organisms, organisms passing along the creek. So as a way to detour that, they've just made the restrictions or requirements nearly impossible to do what we would consider to be a traditional low water crossing. Due to the span of that location, what would be required, we could go back with some tubes and, and some different things there, but Chad was saying that the final, the final project, due to length of it, would then put that site on our bridge inspection inventory. So we have a recurring cost in the future there, so. We'll work some numbers, we'll continue to gather some information to see exactly what is best going to fit there. And then I think at that point, we'll have to make a decision whether to go forth with it or possibly just wait that portion of it. So for me, am I hearing right that, that they came and funded? Yes, yes, mitigation through FEMA will help replace that. And don't quote me on this, I asked Alan and we kind of didn't remember exactly, but I was, and we're going to check for clarification, but I believe FEMA said that through mitigation, they would cover 100% up to $200,000 to fix that location and do that. I didn't realize it, but in talking to Chad a little bit more, he, he did some study on that location, but that, there's six miles of range there if that starts and comes down through there, so. There's a lot of water that falls through there, it doesn't constantly run, but when we get heavy rains, it really, really picks up a lot of runoff, so. But we'll keep you updated on that as well. Public Works project an update.
Kathy, this is, sorry, but I asked Jeremy, because you said you wanted some information about Public Works and what they're doing and whatever. So Jeremy, he wanted to ask.
And we spoke a little bit before all commissioners were in here about, I will give this update once a month and then we will go for a quarterly presentation to commission with some pictures and stuff like that that we can put up on the monitors so you guys can see exactly what the projects look like that we're accomplishing as well as equipment that you've approved to purchase and things like that, so. Public Works crews cut down two hazardous trees on Whiskey Lake Road. I don't know if any of you are familiar with there, but there were some really big oak trees right on the edge of the road that even when I was in that section, I would lay it around, it was just a hazard, so. We did finally get those down. They did complete the crack ceiling on Humboldt and Asher Road in anticipation of the 2025 chip ceiling. 2,000 of the 3,000 tons of chips through the chip ceiling have been hauled. They are working this week to finish up hauling the other thousand tons that are needed for that project. They did install culverts on Old Forty for new residents going to be built out there. Two reserved parking signs were added at the annex building for GIS and the sanitarium. They run into a lot of issues up there when they have court, the parking gets very limited and sometimes they don't have a place to park, so. I did, that is a city parking lot, I did speak with Ray, I bear with the city and he had no issue with us putting those there as long as we maintain them, so we could put them there, we'll maintain them. United Way and Soul Conservation, they have now requested two out in front of their office down below. They run into the same thing with the DMV with all the driver's licenses and stuff that they often don't have a place to park. So we're going to add two there as well. Let's let it go to lunch and come back and then there's more. Right, right, yep. So we do have the signs ordered for that in the brackets because that is concrete, it takes a different bracket and not those close to the ground. We'll get them ladies taken care of. Blade and gravel roads last week, I'm not sure we got through their sections. And like I said, this week, they're going to focus on hauling rest of that chip seal. And just little knowledge for the public, we do Public Works maintains 117 miles of asphalt road, 240 miles of gravel road and four miles of earth or minimum maintenance road. And currently in the Public Works Department and all those departments that we do oversee, we have. And currently in the Public Works department and all those departments that we do oversee, we have twenty-nine employees and are currently four vacancies. We're in pretty decent shape, but we could use a few more employees if anybody wants to apply.
Do you guys ever go to the, um, job fairs on post?
No.
I went to one last year.
Stop coming off this.
Um, city building.
Mm-hmm.
We seasonal, um, with building maintenance is full now, but we have suppliers and O'Reilly Waters, um, we'll try to talk with County Community College and please returning
College too.
Students up there, so we do try to reach out and network when we can, um, but right now I think we're a little more focused on some of the jobs that we need, so trying to find the right person with
Mm-hmm.
All the skills from the board. Just, we wanna take our time to make sure.
Yeah, we have held some interviews for the assistant administrator position and did elect to go and pass on those because I think it's important that we find.
Get the right person. Mm-hmm.
And it is not an easy position to fill.
No.
A lot of knowledge and a lot of different.
Mm-hmm.
Assistant supervisor position was offered last week and then, um, then applicant turned it down. We keep on another job, so. Lots of interviews, lots of sometimes offers that we make, but, um, it is a process. Takes a lot of time.
Um, next I'll give a little bit of an update on roadside mowing or the right of way mowing. Jason and his staff started mowing right of way on May fourteenth in sections four and five blacktops. Roads included Lions Creek Road, Poland Road, Jay Hill Road and Skitty Road. Uh, and those sections were finished, finished last Thursday afternoon. On Friday, Unit Fifty-Five started on section six blacktops, which include Davis Creek Road and Clark's Creek Road. And then moving to section seven and H, seven and eight, which includes roads such as Humboldt and Lower McDowell. Uh, Unit Sixty-Five started on section three blacktops, which includes Old Forty, Norfolk Lake Road and Liberty Hall Road. And he will be moving to sections one and two, which encompasses, uh, Highway Two Forty-four, Breakley Road, Laurel Canyon area and other residential areas, Seaver Estates and those stuff in that way. Uh, and their goal is to have all the blacktops road by Memorial Day and cemetery areas located on gravel roads and that as well. How that would be nice for the holidays. An noxious weed update. Um, they've been spraying, doing some spraying. Mostly all the county grounds have been sprayed at least once, which includes, uh, around the buildings, parking lots, rock beds, fences, et cetera, for bare ground treatment. Uh, they're also working on making up, making a second touch-up pass, uh, when weather allows them to. And they have bare grounded the shoulders on Old Seventy-Seven. They had a little bit of trouble with the electric pump on their sprayer, so they don't have that quite finished up. Unless they get the parts for that, they'll get it, get it completed. That is important because we do drag those rock shoulders and if they grow up and it's vegetation, it's extremely difficult to drag if it kind of falls up, so. Uh, they have been out roadside spraying in section eight, mostly targeting musk thistle and vine weed. And they're scheduled to keep on spraying those areas, but a lot of their spraying operations are dependent upon weather. So as we have wind and we have rain, it really, really holds them back on that. They are out taking care of their business as well. A couple of deals we didn't have on the agenda. Uh, May second, Saturday of the month, numbers recycling participants was twenty-three. H H W drop offs was three and landfill users was forty. So people are using that pretty heavily on Saturday. Um, commission did request that I reach out to Riley County on that Boulder Road McDowell Creek Road maintenance deal there. I did talk to them. They were all in favor of snow removal. Um, we wanted to trade out that snow removal part of it. As far as the gravel maintenance portion of it, they don't see a lot of maintenance on their section of that over there, just basically because there isn't very many residents. They have a little road groomer that they pull behind a pickup truck, drag it over there, drop it down, ruin the road. They haul a little rock over there when it's necessary, so. They didn't see that us taking over the gravel road maintenance of it would be that much of a benefit to them, but the snow side of things, definitely one hundred percent they would be interested in. And pursuing them coming up with an agreement, but they would plow all the way out to interstate on McDowell and we will take care of that section as well for them on Boulder Road. I don't know, I guess, do we wanna pursue? I've been Betsy draft something up as far as an agreement with that. I know the gentleman handshake thing is kind of out the window more than I want anymore, so.
Yeah, I definitely think we need to have something. Yeah, for sure. So everybody knows what we expect of each other, so. But yeah, I think that'd be a great idea and.
Well, I can get with Betsy on that and see if we can get to working up some kind of wheel there wrapped up within, in all parts to agree on. But he'd still have to. Play the pressy road. Yeah, but that would be done with the motor right here, uh, because we go, we have right across the interstate, you know, we're going to Blanca, name of that road there, you probably know. Goes back up in there.
Oh, Roger.
Roger, there you go, yeah. So we'll have a blade right there to do that. We could rough cross and. But those that like that pressy, I guess it's not nearly as precedent to get the snow off of that like it is the McDowell because a lot of people are traveling. Uh, last thing I have would be the courthouse tax credit amendment approval. Um, we did fill out an application for the second phase of the courthouse project and that was approved, so, but we'll get the tax credit on that. That second phase can now officially start. Um, I did let, let the contractor know that they can begin that and it sounded like they were gonna get started on that right away. So what I want to see is what they've done.
Yeah, it does. It looks real good. I know, I know. Oh, were they? Well, it was really pretty. It was a little windy, but.
I think for me that, you know, the retaining wall there along Eighth Street, that's probably the one I'm looking forward to most because I don't know, you know, how many people actually look at that and pay attention to it. It is in really, really bad shape. There's a lot of up pointness and a lot of broken stone and stuff, so that will really look nice.
Yeah, it will.
You don't wanna have it like the other side of Eighth Street, you know.
That looks really, you know, they, they, they put, um, uh, plants in there now. It looks good.
I did see that.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I do have a question.
Okay.
Were you able to deal with the city, um, on the, city life between that?
I did, yes. I had a meeting with them Wednesday at ten o'clock.
Okay. Did Joshua contact with me?
Yep.
He, he wasn't sure who the contact was and I said, is he?
I had actually tried to reach out to them off of the email I think Theresa sent me, but then in between that time, email addresses had changed for the city and so. Yeah, we were.
Yeah, all of a sudden everything started popping back.
Right, so we were, I was kind of in that phase and I got the tail and I'm like, hey, I can't even get an email out to these folks, you know? I think they've changed and they finally did get, not finally, but they did get me the email addresses and. But Josh had got ahold of me, so yes, we do have a meeting at ten o'clock on Wednesday to kind of discuss the details of that because as I mentioned to him, it's gonna be very important that we involve hams in this discussion because hams only keep so many trailers outside down there.
Mm-hmm.
There's gonna be a huge influx of stuff coming into that facility. We need to turn it over with hams as well, so.
Isn't that in August?
Well, they, they haven't set a date or anything, but I think, we're gonna talk about it tonight at the joint meeting, but, uh, I don't think anything's really been set until we, you know. But I think it'll be good, I mean, for the whole county and, um, and then, um, I know, um, we don't do tires, but were you looking at, weren't you gonna look at the, um, a grant for that?
Yeah.
Well, apparently Walmart does, takes them for two dollars apiece, so I don't know, maybe we can, during the negotiations of getting this done, partner with Walmart and say, hey, we're wanting to do this big thing, you know, would you like to join? And maybe they'll be prepared and maybe people can take, um, tires to Walmart. So.
I know you would ask me as well for some tire information, so lots of K D H rules that we would have to be inclined with if we ever wanted to go down that route. So I have that information, but I guess that might sound like a good, good starting point to see, um, because even if we were to like host them or hold them at our facility, there's a certain number that you can only have at a time.
Mm-hmm.
So K D H if it popped up and we had too many, then we could get fined for that, so. I think that's a good place to start and then maybe we just expand on that for the future or.
Yeah.
Something like that. Um, I think Rattle County also accepts, not also, Rattle County accepts tires. I installed it on our website, so. Um, we just kind of encourage, if we get a phone call to check tire places around here or we'll tell them they can go to Riley, but, um, if we ever wanted to get in that spot of taking tires and accepting, there's just lots to go through K D H first. Not that we can't ever, but if that is something we would be interested in.
Well, I think it's important, um, people who sell tires and.
Yeah.
They do, K D H does have a, what is it called? A, um, they have a little program that if we do find a tire like in a ditch on the side of the road and our staff are called out to pick up the tire, we can go and have a disposer properly at a certain facility that accepts them. And then we can send the invoice of the fee that it costs us to dispose the tire. We can send that to K D H for reimbursement. They do have that program, um, but our equipment traveling to and from, the staff hours taking those tires to whatever approved facility would not be able to be reimbursed. Um, so it's kind of one of those things we just have to look at where we could go if it'd be worth our time. Um, but we kind of have to have it all documented and take pictures that we found the tire on the side of the road, because he said other places have tried to just say we found all of these tires on the side of the road and so we'll take advantage of the program, but.
Cameras in your trucks.
Yes, yeah, that wouldn't be an issue, yeah, because we could pinpoint where we picked it up, but we do have that program, um, for just the fee on the wherever we would have to pay to dispose of the tire, we could send that invoice to K D H to request for reimbursement on that, so. Jane said now we have a lot of calls on those lately, um, but if we do start to see an impact like that, we can look at that footprint and see if I'd be, um, able to get to us.
You might check with Morris County. I know they have, somebody come in and pick up the tires they paid for, but, um, I don't know, does it come up to the trailer and come pick them up?
Yeah.
Well, there's so much recycling going on now. They use tires for different things.
Yeah, playgrounds.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's, I think there are lots of options, but there are options, um, if we're willing to go that route, but I have at least some good information to start with if we ever wanted to look at those.
Anything else?
That's all that we have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Please, um, again, Kaylin too, for the agenda, that's nice to go right down there and.
Okay, good.
Just mark it up there, that.
Yeah, we're hoping that's gonna work, but, um, yeah. We'll just keep doing that.
And adjustments are needed.
Yep, go with the flow.
Thank you.
Thanks. Sure.
Yeah, that's fine.
Um, I make a motion that we go into, um, the Board of Health.
All second.
Aye.
Uh, so my name is Charles Martinez. I'm the director at the Geary County Health Department. Uh, this month we had a couple of things going on. Uh, so with K D H, they lost a lot of federal funding and so their staff was cut significantly. Uh, that's going to impact us in many different areas, uh, from sending lab or test to their lab, uh, to technical assistance. We're still gonna be able to function. It's just going to be slower and, uh, more painful process, but we'll be able to make it work. Uh, for our clinic, uh, I talked with Trish this week about it. We had one person, they called about, they weren't able to get their vaccine there at the health department. Uh, we're short nursing staffs. We've got one coming back, uh, from F N L A soon. Uh, but we don't have a nurse who can, uh, see patients throughout the day. We've managed to take our WIC coordinator who's an R N and we have her working Tuesdays and Thursdays for one hour. We canceled appointments we could and, uh, shifted her to the clinic, but we're not able to pull any more hours from WIC to go to the clinic and stay in compliance with the state. Uh, so those people that do need vaccines right of way, we get them into CONZA. They're taking care of that.
Thank you for doing that. He had tried two Mondays in a row, he said, so I don't know what all happened there. I mean, I told him why we couldn't do it that one Monday. He said, well, I tried the Monday before and he said he couldn't get in, so.
Yeah, he was missing us by a day. I'm not sure why he wasn't able to go to CONZA.
I don't know.
That's what we've been pushing.
Yeah.
Everyone, uh, we've been calling over there.
Yeah, I don't know why the person, because he said when they, he called, he said that he didn't, they said, well, we don't, he said, I just want you to know, he doesn't know when that person's coming back. And I said, well, they had a death in the family, you know, and so, um, but I would reach out to you, but thank you for taking care of that.
And I mean, I'm excited to get her back, talk to her.
She doing alright?
Yeah, she's hanging in there. No matter what, it's gonna be rough.
Yeah, yeah.
And all the staff misses her, so. Uh, for our disease surveillance, uh, measles, I'm very excited about this because it's not, it hasn't made it to Geary County and at the rate it's moving, it's slowing down enough where, uh, we may not be impacted for probably a year. Now, that's just one possibility, uh, but we're doing pretty good. Uh, even with Kansas, we've got fifty-six cases. You see other states, uh, it's flaring up real bad, so. Kansas is hanging in there. Uh, we're prepared. If, once it does get to Geary, uh, we're ready to handle it. Our vaccination rate's climbing, so, uh, I see us getting over the threshold for herd immunity before it actually gets here.
Good.
Uh, for acute respiratory illnesses, uh, and this is the people that are seen in the ER, so this is where we get that data. Uh, that went up a little bit and more of those were because of allergies. They went in having issues breathing and so, uh, most of those were allergies that would come in.
Well, I talked to somebody yesterday. I stopped by the house and he and his wife had it and it took three weeks to get over.
That is rough.
Oh, he said for one week for sure, that can be that bad.
I hope they're getting better.
Yeah, I, he said they're, they're over it now, but this boy, you don't wanna get it.
Uh, for R S V, we're still, we haven't got a case, uh, since March, so we're doing pretty good. Uh, COVID, we still haven't had one since March, uh, at the ER. I'm sure people do have it around here.
Just not getting tested.
It's just ones and twos and it's not bad enough where they're showing up to get treated. Uh, influenza, it's, it went up a little bit, but it, that's like two patients that went in and they tested positive for influenza. So that's right where we would expect it to be, uh, near zero. Uh, GI, so, uh, this one, for some reason last month, it skyrocketed. It was way past what we were expecting. Uh, something was just going around, uh, but it's dropped back down. We weren't able to identify what it was, cause it went so quickly. But it's gone now and it wasn't severe. It was just people showing up with issues. Uh, but it's all taken care of now. Uh, for our sensitive disease report, uh, the two big ones we've got, which our numbers are actually really good on it, was gonorrhea and chlamydia. I'd like to get those two, you know, below two per month. Uh, but I can't be mad at four cases when last year we were at like fifteen cases.
Yeah.
Uh, our WIC deployments, those are holding steady. We've got one training coming up with, uh, it's for our new biller. She's gonna be working with another health department to train up on our system. Uh, we share the same system, but just to, you know, improve our billing system. Uh, our partners, we worked with a lot of people this last month. It's with the Wildcat Region, uh, the Healthcare Coalition, uh, Delivering Change. We are actually working on the SDIs with Delivering Change and, uh, Stormontville. Uh, CONZA, I mean, been working pretty close since our nurse has been out. And, uh, Riley County and Pop County is health departments. Uh, for admin updates, uh, we hired a new clerk for the front desk. And we promoted one of our other clerk to the biller position. Uh, but we're still looking for a dietitian and an RN. I'm gonna talk with Crystal today about that to see, so I was talking with other dietitians that we had in the past and from other health departments to find out what the reason might be. And they're saying, uh, it might be paid. So I was gonna talk with Crystal, see if we can get the dietitian position in another case study. Find out if maybe it went up in the region and that's why we can't compete. Uh, for facility updates, it's just general maintenance. They moved some furniture and, uh, did some painting where we had so extensive rooms, so. Other than that, things are going pretty good there. Uh, even with the KDH stuff, we're still gonna be good. It's just makes it a little more difficult.
Yeah. I think it's gonna be all around for that with the funding.
But do you have any questions for me?
No.
I plan to do a whole, possibly more if you're around.
I'll be ready. Uh, yes. Do you have a laptop you'd be able to bring with you? Okay. I was trying to figure out how to do it from my computer.
I, I'll bring mine in.
Okay, I'll make it real easy.
I'm, I'm struggling with it.
I don't know why they changed the system we were using to this. The whole state's having issues with it. Uh, it was that signature.
Oh, the electronic signature? Yeah.
They're asking for a digital one now, even though they have the paper cup.
Oh, is it Adobe? Is it on Adobe? Cause I can never figure that one out.
And we'll get it taken care of.
Cause I, I got an email and I didn't really trust it. And so I had Charles look into it, be verified, it's KDH, so.
All right, well then.
Yeah, I'll hold it a whole year sometime tomorrow.
That works.
Uh, do I have a motion to close the meeting?
Some would.
I'm gonna say, I'm gonna close the meeting as a public board of health on Thursday night.
Aye.
Thank you, Charles.
Hey, thank you.
Now, we'll have a discussion about CBB. Um, the board, so, so. You know, well, it's in the minutes, I know, but that's a comment that members of board have to be somehow tied in with tourism. And so I don't know, you know, our, so here, here's the list of the current board members we have right now. Amy Cuddy, Cece Alaska, Wendy Jensen, Pat Siloski, Helen Byfult.
Who? I didn't hear that name.
Helen Byfult.
I don't know who she is.
I don't either, because she hasn't been to a meeting since last month.
How do you spell her last name?
T H Y F A U L T. So Megan Ruish, Jason McCombe, Jordan McCann, uh, Ty Anderson, he resigned. And of course, Raquel isn't there, because now she's the director. So, but, yeah, Helen hasn't been there. So she said that we typically have two open, technically we have two open spots for our current board. And so bylaws state such that, um, for as far as attendance, if you miss three in a row, off the board. But that's, he suggested that the board recommend removing that person to the commission. Um, and remove them and try and find, find people to fill in, um. So that is the list of current members.
They said they need to be affiliated with.
That's what that says.
Well, it says on here, a majority of which shall be representative of businesses coming within the terms of this act. So when I read that, the terms of the act are, one, um, any person engaged in the business of renting, leasing, uh, letting living quarters, sleeping accommodations, rooms or part thereof in connection with any motel, hotel or tourist court. But then it also talks about convention and tourism promotion. So it talks about, um, consists of group tours, pleasure travelers, association meetings and conventions, trade shows and corporate meetings and travel. So does that mean both of those, like, I know that's why I was kinda shocked you wanted to do this without Betsy. Because, um, I, I, I think that, like, the Historical Society, they do group tours. So, you know, I know that Heather was on there, but, um, uh, she, she resigned from there. But I know that Pat Siloski, who does tours out at the, uh, May, Milford Center, you know, that's, you know, bringing people into the community. So I, I, so is that considered part of the majority of?
So I'll need to pass, um, representation, the, um, convention board shall consist of ten travel and industry representative, man, he said it this. Industry representatives follows, A, owners, operators or employees of persons engaged in watching the industry within the county and representatives from agencies or organization actively engaged in promoting tourism. Only one member from an agency, organization or business shall be considered for the board. B, when possible, no less than four of the board shall be representative of the owners or operators engaged in the watching industry. C, the board can commission or sets final approval or disapproval of all proposed members' terms. To me, cause this was one of my concerns, that I thought years ago, we used that staggered terms and I thought we went to every year. First of Jan, not first of the year. Um, maintain continuity of experienced membership. Each member shall serve for a one, return the one year with reappointment privileges. Reappointment privileges shall be defined as sitting committee members being doing preferential consideration for serving an additional term. So.
Where, where, where's that from? Cause that, that.
That's in their bylaws.
Oh.
It's specific to the advisory board. It was redone when we restructured.
Yeah. No, I'm talking about when it talks about the, um, members of the board and what they can be evolved in.
I think that was part of, and I don't know, you're right.
Cause I'm just reading.
That's even the, the one that answers on.
I know, that's why I said, well, I don't know why we're putting this on here, because Betsy wasn't gonna be here today. Yeah. No, I know. So, okay, Jason and, um, Wendy and Megan, cause Megan has a, a Airbnb's. Um, those three are for sure in the hotel business, but is there nobody from Acorns?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay.
On this list. But talking to Raquel, Acorns is a possibility and then the new owners of.
Thunderbird.
Well, that, I didn't mention Alan. It's Sinesta.
Oh, okay.
So she thinks there's possibilities to, to fill that. And I just kinda wanted.
But I mean, isn't even like Courtney's mom, would she be interested in Sinesta? She's still like the camp person out there?
She retired.
Oh, did she? Okay.
So anyway, it's just food for thought. We can think about it and we'll ask Betsy a little bit more about it. And maybe at the same time have, uh, Raquel come in and talk just.
I know they wanna look, you know, uh, make it less, um, uh, decrease the numbers on it, but I mean, it does say in there that if you have a board, it shall be ten members, so.
They wanted ten because.
Yeah. Mm-hmm.
They wanted ten because they couldn't get members to.
No, they wanted less. They wanted five.
They wanted, uh, they wanted to lessen it because of the fact they can't get the majority. So if you get more people now that's got more interest, maybe they should have a problem keeping ten on there. If that's stretched toward it, we have to.
Of course, that doesn't actually mean, because I'm not a, but.
No. Yeah. Yeah. And, you know, and I think if we do everything we can to try to get hoteliers and people involved in that and we can't, I think that, you know, I.
There's gotta be a stipulation.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I think that if we, if we show that, okay, we're trying to get all these people here, but we can't, let's get, you know, at least we have the ten-member board.
I was just gonna tell you, next week's agenda is full because, um, so many committees coming in, the Katie's coming in, so public caring for NRP, Betsy from, um, we have break to lunch and, well, we have a department meeting, then we'll break to lunch and then in the afternoon we'll have that Sinesta.
Yeah.
So it's, unless you wanna talk about it in review, then it's.
No, I think it needs to be a discussion. Mm-hmm. But could we give her guidance on if she wants to go ahead and try to get those people to fill those slots? And, you know, and then, um, um, get them at least going, because, I mean, unless we're gonna. Yeah. And you let her know about Keith Henry too? Yeah. Thank you.
So Gary is coming tonight for Everbridge?
Yes, I'll, I'll remind him.
Oh, so, and I, I did not discuss this tonight, do you want me to? I had time to talk to Colonel Nunzio auto, um, afterwards also. And I was just curious, I said, you've never asked us, but the garrison stays behind with all these deployments, right? Cause you gotta take care of others. You still got something. He goes, yeah. He knows, you know, we'll have spouses and families that'll stay, we'll lose some, but we, but we still have to maintain. But he said, should be told, there'll probably still be seven thousand here. That was a rough guess on his part. I know that school district was gonna talk about the impact of the deployment, but.
Well, that.
I don't think he's gonna be here. I said, we are probably gonna be changed out, but, um.
It may be.
You know, and he said, yeah, don't worry.
Mm-hmm. I, so I, I was approached by Tyler Mason, you know, with, um, Senator Marshall's office. And so we were just chatting because they had brought up some things about, you know, maybe getting with the school district and, and doing, um, just an informational thing about, you know, this is what happens when, you know, families leave for a short time and they're not counted in the, in the, uh, uh, census. That, you know, because they do get monies based on funding, based on the population, are the resources that they might have to give up, are they gonna be there when the, when the troops come back? And so that's what we're gonna talk about tonight. Not only that, um, that would affect the school district, but maybe even doing a, a campaign of like, you know, it's how important it is to shop local, especially at the smaller businesses, um, while the, while the troops are gone. Uh, because anytime you would take a portion of your population out of the community is gonna affect, you know, taxes and businesses. And, and so maybe just having a generalization, cause I don't think people realize how much of an impact that is.
Well, and the sales side helping us out, I'm betting.
Yes. And so that's what, um, I had talked to Christie about it, so she, that's why she's putting that on there. But I also invited, um, uh, Rob, Rob Wilson to come. And then Jordan, I don't know if she's gonna be able to come, but, um, tonight, but, um, just so we can have a, a, a generalized discussion of maybe we should do something prior to all of everybody leaving, you know, to say, hey, you know, this is what's going on and this is why we would like for you to stay. And, and, and then I think they invited, um, Post also to talk about the resources that are still gonna be available to the troops, um, and their families while everybody's deployed. So.
And when are they leaving? October?
I guess some people are starting to leave this summer and then October. And then Ben, Ben, Ben Beesler, um, uh, said that the majority of everybody will be gone in the summer. That's the largest chunk of summer of twenty twenty-six. For a couple of months. That'll be like everybody and then people start coming back. Mm-hmm. So that might be good for the school district, cause then it'd be end, the end of school year and the beginning of the school year, so.
Um, you have minutes?
Yeah. There's those two change order. I told you that, it's no good.
I make a motion, we accept this change orders.
They're moving seven, they're accepting change orders, all of them, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried.
After the minutes from the twelfth of May, um, I had, when I was going through Trish's commission review and update, I had Council Edward expecting. So I'll be sad. So, I'll fix that. And, uh, and then on Keith's, I have Jason Lycus coming to the meeting twice, he really long time. Then when we were talking about the EMS rule, people said, uh, Tony Nash agreed to do the agreement today with flexibility today.
I didn't spell it right.
What does the T U N spell that right? Goodness of the hands in regards to C I P in the future. So I'll add that. Couple grammatic additions, I gotta have Ellen leaving the meeting, I didn't have that. So that's all I got, for the twelve.
Motion for approval?
Aye, some would.
Second.
And then signing to approve the minutes, last meeting on papers, say aye.
Aye. Are we done? Or you wanna wait, see if anybody shows up?
Nobody is. Yeah, yeah, the ones who.
Yeah.
I'll give it one more minute. Now I'm done. We're done.
Alrighty.